Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 12, 2018 Salisbury City Council Legislative Session. I would ask you at this time to please silence all electronic devices, and if you need to make a call, we ask that you exit the chamber and take the call out in the hallway. If for some reason an emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left and a right, and then go down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators in case of an emergency. And if you should need special assistance, please let us know, and we'd be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I'll invite Pastor Martin Hutchinson of the Community of Joy Church of the Brethren for our location. Good evening, Reverend.
Thank you for the honor of being here with you tonight.
Pleased to have you.
Let us pray. God, in these moments, we pause at the end of this day to get here in this room with you. Some of us have been hurrying throughout this day. Things haven't gone well. It's been a hectic day, and yet here we are. Others of us have had a great day. Things have gone better than we anticipated, and we're here, too. We paused to recognize your presence with us and to give you thanks for the life that you've created for us to live. And we also want to thank you for those that you have called and gifted with leadership abilities who lead our city into the glorious future that's ahead for us. We pray your blessing on them and on this meeting and all the citizens of this city that we might work together to build a beautiful world that honors you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Hutchinson. Please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rudacil, Ms. Jackson.
We skipped the proclamation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. President.
I figured this was not the crowd to hear me, so.
These council meetings can certainly be entertaining.
No, go right ahead. I'm sure they don't want to sit through the rest of the meeting, so.
Good evening, Mr. President and council members. Lovely to be with you tonight. I'd like to start off by talking about something that we want to celebrate in February. There's a lot of things to celebrate in February, and over the next two council meetings, we're going to be talking about some of them. And so, in order to help, I'm going to ask Jamie Heater, Arts and Entertainment District Executive Director, and Laura Kordakowski, or, excuse me, Laura Soper, our Business Development Director, to come up and join me and help me in reading this proclamation. So it is my pleasure to proclaim that Maryland's craft beer industry had an overall economic impact of $637.6 million and supported, created 6,541 jobs in 2016, according to an economic impact study conducted by the Bureau of Revenue Estimates that was released in 2017 at the Reform on Tap Task Force Meeting. Maryland craft breweries directly employed 430 workers during 2016, according to the impact study, and had an indirect and induced effect on 264 jobs, yielding a total of $28 million in wages and generating $143 million in economic output. Production among Maryland craft brewers has steadily increased at an annual rate of 15% over the past five years, and in all, the total economic impact of those who brew or deliver beer in Maryland is over $175 million. Governor Hogan has proclaimed February as Feb-brew-ary across the state of Maryland. And so Salisbury hereby also supports this proclamation and in appreciation of the local and statewide impact that breweries have in Maryland, now therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim the month of February as Feb-brew-ary in our city in recognition and celebration of the positive economic impact our local Maryland breweries have had on the city of Salisbury and neighboring Delmarva communities. And I hope by me pronouncing it Feb-brew-ary, you could picture how it's spelled, clever as that is, yes. So ladies, so Jamie and the Arts and Entertainment District Committee have planned a celebration of the month called February in coordination with the state of Maryland. And in fact, Jamie, if you don't even mind, if you don't mind talking a little bit about Third Friday and the things that are planned.
Sure. So the mayor has come up with February all over the state. Different areas are putting together February-style promotions to kind of jump on board with this marketing effort. We put together a downtown Salisbury February Bar Crawl that gives you a whole entire month to visit the six downtown bars and restaurants, to enjoy a Maryland craft beer at each of those restaurants. And you get a little passport card, and you can get, you know, signed off at each location. And if you get all six, you can bring the card into the downtown visitor center for a chance to win a $50 gift card and a hoodie sweatshirt. No purchase necessary. See dealer for details.
So Jamie said it all. So thank you. Thank you, ladies, and look forward to Third Friday this month and to the festivities all month long.
Did you all come to mention the Chamber of Commerce?
Oh, that's right, the Chamber of Commerce. Actually, do you have the location details? Do you mind?
Sure. Morgan and Lauren Alfies from the Chamber of Commerce were not able to join us tonight, but they are hosting an event on Thursday at the SU Downtown Art Gallery to celebrate February. Comptroller Francho will be there, basically a chance to enjoy some good beer and celebrate the month of February. And yeah, it should be fun.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it. The next series of presentations I'm going to make are on a little more serious, not somber, but serious note. And as I call you forward, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the city employees that I call forward, if you don't mind, to go ahead and maybe greet the council members and sort of line up behind the council members so we can get a picture. So the individuals that I'm going to call up here in just a minute and that I'm going to talk to you about, they reacted immediately as volunteer first responders to assist two motorists who crashed right out in front of the government office building at North Division Street and Route 50. Approximately 4:45 PM, as people were leaving the office on Friday afternoon, January 26, 2018, before first responders were on scene, these individuals jumped in and worked to ensure that the injured victims of the accident were safe, were cared for, and were comforted. And upon arrival of Salisbury Police and Fire Departments, they were relieved of, they and their coworkers were relieved from their duties providing traffic control and comforting the accident victims after assisting them from their vehicles. One vehicle was actually overturned in the intersection. One of our deputy city administrators, Andy Kitzer, witnessed this and has recommended and nominated them for recognition tonight. You're each commended for your humanity, your compassion, your quick thinking, your serious action, and for representing the absolute best of the city of Salisbury. So will Mike Zimmerman come forward? Guy Dabak and Dave Kellum, they can't be here tonight, but we'll make sure that they get their certificates. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll slide. Let's slide.
Buddy Conroy is here. Buddy Conroy? Okay. Yeah.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get his name. Let's hear it for Buddy Conroy.
Congratulations. Thank you, Buddy.
I have one more presentation to make tonight. And for this, I'm going to ask Fire Chief Rick Hoppus and Assistant Chief Brian Records to come forward, please. This presentation and the narrative associated with it, I hope you don't mind if I read it. It was prepared by Assistant Chief Records, but I'm going to read it if that's okay. On January 24, 2018, Salisbury and Hebron Fire Departments were alerted to a structure fire at 513 Collins Street. Assistant Chief One arrived on scene with a heavy volume of fire showing from the front and left side of a one-story wood-framed duplex. Just prior to the arrival of fire department units, two citizens jumped into action to rescue three children ages four, five, and seven. Mr. DeAndre Sherwood was at his home at 108 Newport Circle and observed fire coming from the house approximately 300 feet away and ran toward the home. At the same time, Mr. Derek Thompson was next door to the fire at 515 Collins Street and heard some commotion outside. As the two men approached the house, they could hear the mother yelling that her children were still inside. The two men jumped into action and used a rock to break a window of the bedroom where the children were located. They reached in and pulled the children through the window to safety. The fire had originated in the middle of the house where the kitchen was located. A smoke alarm had alerted the mother of the fire, but the fire had cut off her path to her children. If not for the quick thinking and heroic actions of the two men, the three children would have been seriously injured or killed. Most citizens would not attempt to act when faced with the volume of fire coming from the house. Both men disregarded their personal safety and worked together to save the lives of the three young children. The Salisbury Fire Department and the entire city of Salisbury would like to honor Mr. Thompson and Mr. Sherwood with the Citizens Commendation Award. Gentlemen, would you come forward?
Thank you. Can we get a picture with the council? Sure. Thank you so much. Thank you. This is just larger than the trash. All right. I'll stand next to me. Stand up. Tighten up.
The back rows, do a little to your left.
Tighten up.
Yeah, I got stuck up on a gristle.
I must say, being one of the volunteer firemen for many years, it takes a lot of courage when you don't have any gear on and it's about 1,400 degrees to go in and snatch three kids out of a bedroom. That's pretty remarkable. That's a hard act to follow. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have Mr. Rudacil, and we had Ms. Jackson, so we'll leave that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the January 8, 2018 closed session minutes, January 8, 2018 regular meeting minutes, the January 16, 2018 work session minutes, and January 22, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Resolution number 2810, approving the reappointment of Lynn Bratton to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals for term ending January 2022. Resolution number 2811, approving the reappointment of James Mayberry to the Zoo Commission for term ending February 2021. Resolution number 2812, to purchase improved real property located at 401 East Church Street from Thang Tran in furtherance of the goals of the Community Development Initiative. And resolution number 2813, designating the city of Salisbury as a B-City USA affiliate. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Any comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. At this time, I would ask Lynn Bratton to stand, and James Mayberry, if he's here. I want to thank you very much for volunteering, and we see you all the time, so you're always welcome, Lynn. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Very good, thank you. Several items on the award of bid for tonight. The first is Contract 101-18, the CDBG Neighborhood Sidewalk Construction. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids from qualified and experienced contractors to furnish all labor, material, and equipment necessary for the construction of sidewalk, curb, and gutter in CDBG target areas. The city followed standard bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, notifying the city's bidder list, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Five vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of January 23, 2018, at 2:30 PM, with Barker's Land Excavation LLC submitting the lowest responsive and responsible bid. The bid prices noted in your packet were based on the estimated quantities needed to complete curb, gutter, and sidewalk work along Eastern Shore Drive only, again, for big comparison purposes only. Due to the favorable unit prices received as a result of this competitive bid, the city will be able to utilize the CDBG grant funds to complete not just work along Eastern Shore Drive, but additional work in the CDBG neighborhood work area. That includes the Church Street Doverdale neighborhood and the Presidents' and Prince Street neighborhoods. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award a contract for this project to Barker's Land Excavation in the amount of $210,000, $210,000, $298.20, which is the current amount of funding in the accounts noted in your packet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. The next item this evening is change order number one to Contract RFP 06-17. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to process change order number one in the amount of $137,277.13 for Contract RFP 06-17, Radio Communication System Replacement. This change order will provide for the upgrade of the existing Verint Voice Logging System in order to record voice radio traffic. While there are currently three vendors, including Verint, that Motorola has certified to interface to their technology as part of the Radio Communication System Replacement, there are substantial cost savings if we maintain continuity within the Verint product family. Recently purchased data storage can be reused with the upgraded system and does not have to be replaced, and no additional licensing fees will be assessed. That alone is a savings of over $50,000. Funds are available in the project account noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to process change order number one, as noted above, to Motorola Solutions in the amount of $137,277.13.
Any questions? Okay.
Okay. The third item this evening is another change order. The city of Salisbury Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number two in the amount of $98,536 for Contract RFP 11-16. That's the Engineering Construction Services for Main Street Master Plan Phase Two. This change order will provide for the additional contract time, services, and equipment that were necessary to mitigate the soil and groundwater contamination discovered during construction. Funds are available in the account noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement thereby requests council's approval to process change order number two, as noted above, to KCI Technologies in the amount of $98,536.
Any questions? Okay, those are the items.
We still have three more.
Oh, three more.
Mm-hmm. Three more items.
Oh, we do. Sorry, didn't turn the page.
Next page.
Go right ahead.
All right. The fourth item this evening, the Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals for the city water well redevelopment and design. This solicitation sought responses from qualified and experienced firms to provide professional design services for the redevelopment of the Paleo Water Treatment Plant, well number one, and the Park Water Treatment Plant, well field, and the design of the Park Water Treatment Plant, well 2B. The Department of Procurement followed standard solicitation practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Two vendors submitted a proposal by the due date and time of December 7, 2017, at 2:30 PM. Both vendors were determined to be responsive and responsible, and the technical proposals were evaluated according to the criteria established in the solicitation document, which, by the way, we did note in the departmental memo. Both vendors were deemed qualified, which means they achieved 75% of the maximum technical points, and the Department of Procurement proceeded in opening the price proposals from both vendors. In your packet are the composite scores and the total proposed prices for each vendor. At this time, the Department of Infrastructure and Development wishes to award Tasks 100 and 101, and Tasks 103 to 107, to Goldar Associates, for a total award of $89,800. It is anticipated that Task Number 102, in the amount of $76,100, may be awarded via change order once the FY18 Water and Sewer Bond reallocation is complete. Currently, there is funding available in the GL accounts noted in your packet to award the tasks I noted. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award Contract RFP 04-18 to Goldar Associates in the amount of $89,800.
Any questions? If you just could, I just have one more for my information. The two costs, the two bids were very close together, but the ratings were significantly higher for the one.
Because the costs were so close together, I don't have the matrix with me this evening. Because the costs were so close together, likely it wasn't so much the cost that swayed it, it was on the technical proposal, which is really related to their qualifications.
Okay, fine. Thank you. That's fine. I anticipated it was something like that. Okay. Any questions?
The next item this evening is a declaration of surplus request. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Fire Department to declare 14 pieces of turnout gear, nine coats, and five pair of pants as surplus. These items have surpassed their usable life and must be disposed of in accordance with the National Fire Protection Association Code 1851, so they are not utilized for further service. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to declare the noted items surplus and to allow the city of Salisbury Fire Department to destroy the gear.
Any questions?
The last item this evening is one additional request for declaration of surplus. The city of Salisbury currently owns the following property, a location map of which I attached in your packet. It's on Eastern Shore Drive, parcel number 2804. The administration does not wish to retain this property as its size, which is less than 1,400 square feet, and location is of little to no value for holding or redevelopment purposes. Pursuant to Chapter 2.36 of the Salisbury, Maryland Code of Ordinances, city-owned real property must be deemed surplus by the director of procurement, who is then to make a recommendation to city council as to the sale or disposition of such real property. If approved by council, the Department of Procurement will invite proposals for development or prepare an advertisement for auction sale. However, Section 2.36.090.B allows for certain categories of parcels to escape the competitive bidding policies. Remnants of parcels, remnant parcels of surplus unused land from street closings or other land transactions where such parcels are not seen as development parcels. Due to the size of parcel 2804, it is unlikely that development of this minor piece of land would benefit the city in a meaningful way, and therefore, I am recommending that such be donated to the adjacent landowner in accordance with the request from the Department of Housing and Community Development. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to declare this parcel surplus and to allow the city to proceed with the donation as noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. All right, well now, I'll now call the motion on the award of bids. All those in favor of awarding the bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2806.
So moved.
Second? Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan.
Resolution number 2086, a resolution of the City of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Walston Switch Road Chop Tank Electric Property Annexation, beginning for the same point on the corporate limit, said point lying on the westerly right-of-way line of Walston Switch Road, running by and with the center line of Horse Bridge Creek, thence south and east around the property boundary back to Walston Switch Road, and thence north to the point of beginning. Whereas the City of Salisbury is considering the annexation of a parcel of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate city limit of the City of Salisbury, beginning for the same point on the corporate limit, said point lying on the westerly right-of-way line of Walston Switch Road, and running by and with the center line of Horse Bridge Creek, then south and east around the property boundary back to Walston Switch Road, and then south to, thence north to the point of beginning, and being more particularly described as Exhibit A, attached here to and made apart hereof. And whereas the City of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed area of annexation pursuant to the local government article, formerly Article 23A, Section 19O of the Maryland Annotated Code, and whereas the public hearing is scheduled for March 26, 2018, at 6:00 PM, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury that the annexation plan for the Walston Switch Road Chop Tank Electric Property as set forth in Exhibit B, attached herein, and made apart hereof, is adopted for that area of land located and binding upon the westerly right-of-way line of Walston Switch Road, thence running by and with the center line of Horse Bridge Creek, thence south and east around the property boundary back to Walston Switch Road, and thence north to the point of beginning, being more particularly described as exhibit, on Exhibit A heretofore, said parcel being contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury.
Any questions?
Just glad to hear, say here too again.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution number 2806, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 2807.
So moved.
Second? Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
A resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the easterly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Walston Switch Road Chop Tank Electric Property Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the corporate limit, said point lying on the westerly right-of-way line of Walston Switch Road, thence running by and with the center line of Horse Bridge Creek, then south and east around the property boundary back to Walston Switch Road, and thence north to the point of beginning. Whereas, the City of Salisbury has received a petition to annex dated October 3, 2017, Exhibit 1, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters and of the persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed valuation of the real property in the area sought to be annexed, binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Walston Switch Road Chop Tank Electric Property Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the corporate limit, said point lying on the westerly right-of-way line of Walston Switch Road, thence running by and with the center line of Horse Bridge Creek, then south and east around the property boundary back to Walston Switch Road, and thence north to the point of beginning. And whereas, the City of Salisbury has caused to be made a certification of the signatures on said petition for annexation and has verified that the persons signing the petition represent at least 25% of the persons who are eligible voters and property owners, owning 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area to be annexed, all as of November 7, 2017, and as will more particularly appear by the certification of Leslie C. Sherrill, Surveyor of the City of Salisbury, attached here to as Exhibit A, and whereas it appears that the petition dated October 3, 2017, meets all of the requirements of the law, and whereas the public hearing is scheduled for March 26, 2018, at 6:00 PM.
Mr. President? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2807 with, for an amendment.
Okay.
So we need to-
I was gonna make an amendment.
Go right ahead.
So on Exhibit C, that was in our packet, we need to replace on the last whereas paragraph on page one, where after the parenthesis of, where it says district, we need to replace the rest of that paragraph with, and that the use of the property and the improvement thereon, as of the effective date of the annexation thereof, shall be determined by the authorized city authority to be a public utility operation center as defined by Section 17 dot 04 dot 120 of the zoning code. Hereafter, public utility operation center that includes a solar farm as defined by Section 17 dot 04 dot 120 of the zoning code. Hereafter, solar farm. A principal use with an accessory use both permitted by right under Section 17 dot 46 dot 020 of the zoning code, and conforming to the zoning code, hereafter, the annexation. And.
Okay, I have a motion to amend, and is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Irtan seconds, Mr. Boda made the motion. Any discussion about the motion? Hearing none, I'll call, vote on the amendment to the motion. All those in favor of the amendment as read by Mr. Boda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I will now call the motion on Resolution number 2807 as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution, Resolution 2814, adopting a capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Second? Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Resolution number 2814, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland adopting a capital improvement plan for the five-year period of FY '19 through '23. Whereas, it is important for the city to develop a short-range plan showing its capital outlay needs and setting forth a plan for financing those needs. And whereas, the development of such a plan helps to ensure that the city's short-range capital needs are being addressed in a responsible manner, helps to place those needs in a priority order, and helps anticipate the resources that will be available to finance those needs. And whereas, the city's staff has developed the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year '19 and ending in fiscal year '23. And whereas, the City Council has reviewed the attached capital improvement plan and finds that it reflects the capital needs of the city as can best be reasonably anticipated, now therefore be it resolved that the Salisbury City Council adopts the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year '19 and ending in fiscal year '23. Be it further resolved that since the attached capital improvement plan is intended to be a planning document only, the adoption of this plan does not authorize any project, nor does it appropriate any funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just want to say publicly, we mentioned it during the work session, but the presentation of this year, well, each year that I've been on the council has really improved. This year probably being the best of all. I, I think particularly it helped us in the small summaries on top of the, on top of the items. Really helped us pin down and made it a lot easier from my perspective. So I, I want to thank whoever's, was involved with that.
All credit goes to Chris Demone and Keith Gordery and, and his team.
They, they should be commended because it was a lot easier. Okay, hearing there are no other comments. All those in favor?
Okay, all those in favor of adopt, adopting Resolution number 2814, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2473 for the second reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Rudacil, second.
Mr. Tillman, good evening.
Uh, yes, hello, council, president. Uh, this is the ordinance number 2473, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to increase the salaries of the mayor and council members of the City of Salisbury. This ordinance was read and passed by the council on January 22, 2018, and vetoed by the mayor on January 24, 2018, and now comes before the council for further consideration and a vote.
Any comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2473, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2474 for the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda? Second?
Second.
Mr. Irtan?
Mr. Tillman?
Ordinance number 2474 is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury, Maryland to establish a fee schedule for renting city facilities, amenities, and public spaces. Whereas, the city desires to make available city facilities, amenities, and public spaces for recreation use for individuals and families at no cost, and whereas the city desires to rent city facilities, amenities, and public spaces for community events and activities, both public and private, and whereas the city desires to establish a fee schedule for renting city facilities, amenities, and public spaces for exclusive use. And whereas, the revenue collected as rental fees will offset some operational costs incurred during the rental period, including but not limited to materials, equipment, utilities, and labor required for site preparation, cleanup, and supervision that goes beyond routine tasks, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the fee amounts in the attached Exhibit 1 FY 2018 fee schedule facility rental fee be established. And Exhibit 1 sets forth the various costs and locations that would be rented.
Any questions or comments?
No, I just want to say, I think Mr. Kitzred did a great job on hearing our concerns and, and putting this together, so.
Please make sure he gets, or thanks. Okay, I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2471, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair?
Point of order?
2471.
247.
2474.
What did I say, one?
Yeah.
Oh, for the first reading, that's, I'm sorry. 2474 for the first reading. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2475 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second?
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the council of the City of Salisbury, amending and supplementing ordinance number 2223, passed by the council on October 22, 2012, approved by the mayor of the city on October 23, 2012, and effective on October 23, 2012, in order to authorize and empower the City of Salisbury to use and apply a portion of the principal amount of the $6,041,000 City of Salisbury taxable public improvement bond of 2012, issued on December 5, 2012, to projects identified herein as sewer infiltration and inflow remediation, replace distribution piping and valves, restore park well field, tank, and reservoir mixing system, Paleo Water Treatment Plant, roof improvements, pump station building improvements, park water treatment electrical gear replacement, Glen Avenue Lift Station and Sewer Extension in Mount Herman Road, in addition to the projects originally identified in ordinance number 2223, and to identify the sources from which debt service on the 2012 taxable bond allocable to such additional projects will be payable in the first instance, providing that this title is a fair statement of the substance of this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally related to the use and proceeds of the 2012 taxable bond. The actual memo that appears in your packet, I think, gives a fairly good explanation. And then there is a chart included on page five. I'll be happy to read on if anyone would like me to read the rest of this verbatim, but I think it's pretty clear what you're doing here. You're basically taking a portion of that $6,041,000 and reallocating it to those projects that were just itemized a few minutes ago, and reducing the original amount that was allocated for wastewater treatment plant upgrade to the lower figure of $3,610,300.
Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2475 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
I do have one request to speak this evening, and forgive me if I mess up. Michaeline? Michaeline, I did it, okay. Willman, please come to the podium and be happy to hear you.
My name is Michaeline Willman. I live in Newtown. I have circulated a petition to only Newtown residents to ask the city council and the mayor to take down the pylons and the "Do Not Enter" signs at 13 and East William and at Oakdale and Isabella, to allow cars to get to their own homes on their own streets. Right now, everyone in about 10 streets in Newtown are forced to drive down Isabella to get to their homes. And Isabella is already jammed up with too much traffic. I have a petition where 155 residents, just Newtown residents, signed it, asking that we open up the two streets to allow those people to get to their own homes on their own streets. So I was just wondering if we could set a date maybe to discuss this further, or what, how do I go from here with this?
So, so I think Donna in my office, somebody put it on my desk on, this morning. So I've, I've got, I've got it, I'm in receipt. I think what we need to do is probably get our traffic team to sit down with you. And we'll sit down with a group, Judith and anybody else from the, the neighborhood leadership team, the Neighborhood Association leadership team, and sit down and discuss how to best proceed with a traffic analysis. Now, a typical traffic study would, that we would do internally would just be, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, would just be measuring traffic currently, but since, since part of the request here, the discussion, is about changing or removing barriers to, the traffic counts only. East William is not going to be, it's not going to tell us anything in this case. Right, counts and speed on Isabella, we'll pick up from that, but, yeah, I think a comprehensive conversation about all traffic associated with Newtown would be in order. So we'll reach out to you, you, you put your phone number on that, I think, right?
On the one that was turned in?
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I just hadn't heard anything back.
I got it this morning, so we'll, we'll call you.
Great, excellent.
We'll call you directly, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Willman. Okay, the, I have just a reminder for everyone. We're having our coffee with the council tomorrow evening at Faith Baptist Church 305 Daggsboro Road. We encourage anyone to come out. This is your meeting, it's not our meeting. We'll be there to answer any questions you might have. And if, I will tell you ahead of time, if we can't answer the questions, we'll get the information and we'll get back to you. So it's an opportunity for you to share your thoughts and concerns, and we'll be there at 6:00 PM. Anything else for the good of the order? Yes?
I would like to acknowledge that February is also Black History Month. And I would like for all the Facebookers, if you haven't gone Facebook, I've set up a page, my own page, where you can go on and find out a lot of informative information about black history here. And I never knew there's so much stuff happened here. I never knew that a lot of people took part in a lot of things. I know a lot of history, but we have come up with political leaders, business owners, activists, doctors, nurses, pastors, churches, teachers, even Caucasian businesses that served our community. So I would like for you all to just tap into April R. Jackson and just go through the page and just look, because it has Black History Moments, and it'll tell you a lot of things that happened here. And I'll be doing it all month, but we need to know our history here in Salisbury. And African-Americans, blacks, Negroes were very instrumental. And African-Americans, Black, Negroes were very instrumental in a lot of things here, and we have a lot of history here, and I just want everybody to be reminded of that. So we're not going to just be celebrating Black History in February, we're going to try to do it all year long, and if anybody has any history, please let us know it, because I'm quite sure a lot of you here know a lot of history of African-Americans, so we need to know that, and I'd thank you if you would do that, and I would appreciate greatly if you would.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Is there nothing else? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.